We're back in open session. Since we're back in open session, Chancellor Burke will provide a welcoming greeting, a welcome greeting, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Zoom board meeting of the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members who are participating via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Trustees Marcia Milczek, Tim Jamal, Terry Witt-Riddell, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, T.J. Prendergast, James Wright, and Student Trustee Ethan Motzey have been designated as panelists. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Following the meeting, the district will make a recording available on the SOCCCD website. As a reminder, board members are asked to use the raised hand feature via Zoom when they wish to speak and are encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requests for the public comments to be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud at the appropriate time in the meeting. I would now like to turn the meeting over to Trustee Milczek, who will call the meeting to order.
The January 19th, 2021, meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California's Government Code, Section 54953, and Governor Newsom's Executive Order N. 2920 and N. 3520. I ask that the trustees mute themselves at this time. Are there any actions taken in closed session that needed to be reported out?
There were no actions taken in closed session that are reportable.
Okay, thank you. And right now, we have an invocation led by Trustee Inman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Jay.
So, thank you. We're meeting tonight rather than yesterday because we paused for a moment to remember and celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I salute the people in the meeting because we know that they, I'm sorry, wait. Dr. King once said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And we know that everybody in this meeting does things for others every single day, particularly to our students. When I was Director of Forensics, I had a middle-aged student that came to be on our speech team because she couldn't get her promotion without overcoming her fear of public speaking. It was really interesting and worthwhile and fulfilling to work with her, and we even got her to a tournament. The point I want to make, though, is that when that was over, her husband said, "You guys don't explain this right. This isn't really about speaking, it's about listening." A person is in a round with six people, they speak for maybe 10 minutes, and then they have to listen for 50 minutes. I think he was right, in a way. While listening is the most important way to communicate, it's neglected and very rarely taught. I have often said that the most important sign of respect we can give to another person is to truly listen to them. But what does that mean? In this difficult times that we're in right now, it's really important to stop listening just to reply, but to start listening to understand. Secondly, is that it's important to listen with compassion. Sometimes we have not seen that. There's so much division and even death and all of these things happening, it's easy to go away from compassion, but we must return to it. And finally, we need to listen to ourselves, our body, mind, soul. It's challenging right now to take in all of the things that are happening. We need to take a deep breath and take care of ourselves. Martin Luther King did say, "What are you doing for others?" And I would say that one of the most important things is to listen for understanding and for compassion. You've probably heard the saying that God gives us one mouth and two ears because we're supposed to listen twice as much as we talk. So that's what I'm going to do now, is to stop talking and start listening again. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to our wonderful country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, at this time, I ask the chancellor to read aloud any public comments received via email. Please note, all email correspondence relating to this meeting will become part of the board minutes.
Mr. Murray has asked to give the comment himself.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to read the comment myself. Hello, my name's Pete Murray. Some of you may already know me. I'm a faculty member at Saddleback and Chair of the Philosophy and Humanities Departments. I'm also co-chair of the Institute for Teaching and Learning and co-chair of the Equity and Inclusion Council at Saddleback. I'm here tonight to urge you to allow Saddleback College to make the decision on which mascot we would like as a symbol of the college. I'd also like to provide you with a summary of the many individuals and groups on campus and of the surrounding community who have signed petitions and passed resolutions in support of retiring the Gaucho. The campaign to retire the Gaucho has been going on for many years, far more than the five and a half I've been here, and has been recently gaining strength due to current events in our country, including the elimination of scores of other stereotypical and otherwise harmful mascots from professional sports teams and colleges across the nation. Now, at Saddleback, this is truly been a grassroots movement that has enjoyed widespread support. This past summer, a petition to retire the Gaucho mascot collected the signatures of 214 employees and was presented to President Stern. A similar petition for community members, including alumni, currently has 229 signatures. In addition to these petitions, this past semester, many governments, groups, committees, divisions, and departments on campus have passed resolutions asking for the immediate elimination of the Gaucho mascot. Here's the list. It's the Associated Student Governments of both Saddleback and IBC, the International Student Diversity Council, our Consultation Council, our Academic Senate, the Faculty Association, the Equity and Inclusion Council, the Social and Behavioral Sciences Division, the Anthropology and Ethnic Studies Department, the Psychology Department, the International Languages Department, the Mathematics Department, our Medical Assistant Department, our Horticulture and Landscape Design Department, the Gender and Sexuality Studies Department, the Theater Arts Department, our Child Development and Education Department, our Math Science and Engineering Division, our Humanities Department, History Department, Sociology Department, Interior Design Department, and our Art Department have all passed resolutions asking for the immediate elimination of the Gaucho mascot. Now, many other entities and individuals have voiced their concerns, but have not yet, at least to our knowledge, passed resolutions, and we anticipate that more will be circulating. So I just wanted to share that with you, and thank you so much for listening and for your consideration of leaving this decision about the mascot with the college faculty, staff, students, and administration. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your input. Thank you for your input. Are there any other comments?
No, that was the only one today.
Okay, well, thank you for your input. And now we move on to oral reports, and we start with board reports. Last time, I started on the reverse alphabetical order, where I started with the last board member first, and now I'm going to start with the last board member first, but dropping the last one off. So we'll have Terry Witt-Riddell is first because she's the second-last board member, and then we'll go through the whole list, and then I'll give my board report. So, Trustee Witt-Riddell, do you have a board report?
Yes. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to share with you that my month was joyous for the holidays. It was also joyous to know that my family is safe, and I hope that yours is too. Quickly, I attended the opening sessions, as many of you did, and I attended President Stern and President Hernandez with his guest, Dr. Tia Brown McNair. I had heard her now for the third time, and I must say, thank you, Dr. Hernandez, for making it so interactive. I really enjoyed her talk this time more than before. President Stern shared decisions that have been made or going to be made that were difficult with much consideration and widespread input, which was very evident. I attended several webinars from the CCLC, which is the Community College League of California, and they introduced their leadership, which was nice to meet everyone individually instead of seeing a name on emails. I wrote down here, I did listen attentively, and our board member had just mentioned about listening, and I think that is so important. And there were other things I did, but I'll just move on and say, welcome to a new year. So I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee Prendergast, do you have a board report?
Happy New Year, everyone. Hope everyone had a restful holiday and has come back this week with fully charged. I do want to take a moment, kind of some personal privilege in addition to my report, by stating that on Wednesday of last week, our district offered free COVID testing. So I decided to take part in that testing program purely out of curiosity, just to see if there was any chance I could possibly have this virus. I have been safe, wearing masks, social distancing, washing my hands, and using sanitizer whenever possible. I even have a special tool to open doors and enter things on keypads without touching them. On Thursday, I was notified I am positive for COVID. While it is important to understand, I feel totally fine, I am here to say that you need to take this virus seriously. I do not have any symptoms. I do not have any indication whatsoever that I have COVID, other than the test result. And while some may say it's possible it's a false positive, the likelihood is very low. It was a PCR test administered with a brain thickler up my nose, on both nostrils. So I'm here to tell you that you need to take this virus serious, not because you could get something very bad, because you could pass it to someone, to them to get it very badly. That I would be a typhoid Mary right now had I not done that test. I would be walking around, possibly infecting numerous numbers of people. My wife did the test on the same day, she came back negative. So we are splitting the house, much like War of the Roses, we have separate bedrooms, separate bathrooms. I did get the bar. But it is something to take seriously. Having to wear a mask around your own home and sanitize in your own home is not fun, but getting deathly ill is far worse. So I urge everyone to please take this seriously and help. Thank you.
That was a good message, and stay well, please stay well. We need you. Okay, Trustee Jamal, do you have a board report?
I do. I'll say a few words. Thank you. I appreciate Trustee Inman invoking Dr. King, and we know that he preached justice and equality in this country in March for civil rights, and I think the day celebrating him yesterday was obviously very appropriate, that it is a federal holiday. I did attend both the IBC and Saddleback College President Sessions. Both Doctors Hernandez and Stern, congratulations to both of you on launching what promises to hopefully be another great semester here. The passion on the Saddleback side was obvious on an issue we're all aware of, and so I really appreciate that passion that comes from the Saddleback side in particular. And then lastly, as some of you know, I've spoken out at the last couple of board meetings against authoritarianism, dictatorships, regimes that are opposed to freedom and democracy and liberty, regimes like Turkey and Azerbaijan in particular have gotten my attention. And then I saw on January 6th, something that was unimaginable, that cowards stormed the U.S. Capitol in an insurrection incited by the U.S. President. And here we are, and imagine that because, and the storming of the Capitol, because we actually are exercising our democracy by counting the votes. I mean, this cowardly act to attempt a coup on this country and to vandalize our Capitol is absolutely disgraceful, inexcusable, and the fact that there may have been accomplices who were a part of this disgusting conspiracy, they all need to be held accountable. I never really thought that in this country that there would be an insurrection because we had an election that was free and fair. Imagine that. If these people don't like counting of the votes, they can go to Baku, they can go to Ankara, they can go to North Korea, good riddance. Go to places where they don't count the votes, where you know the election outcome in advance. If they want to live in a place where the outcome is predetermined, there are places that will take you, and I suggest they go there. So this act, Dr. King would have obviously been horrified what happened on January 6th, inexcusable and tolerable, and I think all of us as elected officials in particular, and not just elected officials, the entire country, I wish would stand up. It hasn't happened, but at least we can, and at least in our little, our proud district, it's not so little, but in our district, those of us who are elected here, should stand up for justice, righteousness, and against these mobs who tried to engineer what was clearly a coup d'etat using violence and thuggery. So it's not acceptable, and I'll never tolerate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. A lot of heartfelt messages today, it's really fascinating, interesting. Okay, Trustee Jay, do you have a board report?
Yes, I do. Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome back, everyone, and Happy New Year to all. 2021 has to be better than 2020. A big thank you to the Chancellor's Executive Committee for the notice sent regarding the COVID-19 behavior over the vacation break. It was very informative, and I tried to follow the format. Thank you for that. Also, a big thank you for the excellent job everybody is doing with the college's online virtual education. It's been a hard year, but our colleges and all personnel have been up to the challenges and are doing an amazing job. The College's Professional Development Week was a huge success. Board President Marcia Milczek gave an opening talk to both College's Professional Development Week. Marcia, you did a wonderful job with your inspiring talks. I watched the opening sessions of the IBC Professional Development Week led by President John, Dr. John Hernandez, and his welcome back talk. Following his remarks, he held a discussion with Dr. Tia McNair on equity, diversity, and inclusion. The talk was inspiring and set the tone for what was to follow. Dr. McNair is the author of a new book, From Equity Talk to Equity Walk: Let's Live It. Don't forget the IBC Gala coming up Saturday, March 13th. This should be fabulous, if unusual, affair. It benefits, it's a benefit, a great cause for the IBC students. On the next day, Saddleback College held its Professional Development Week opening. Dr. Elliot Stern led off with a welcome back talk. He introduced the new faculty and administrators and gave us the latest news on the COVID-19 outbreak for our area, indicating that we are the hotspot of the country and will be purple in January and February. He expressed concern about our students' education skills and their opportunity to learn critical thinking. He then talked about retiring the Gaucho as the Saddleback mascot, giving, as reasons, student sensibility, and heard from the continuing name of the Gaucho. He indicated that he thought this was the best time to make the change, to move on. Saddleback's Academic Senate President, Blake Stevens, also spoke about retiring the mascot. He also addressed concerns about students learning critical thinking, stating that the best time to teach this was while students are in college. On Wednesday, January 13th, I watched the presentation by Nicole Major and Jennifer Pakmarah on the Zero Textbook Cost. It's a benefit-to-the-teachers-and-students-alike program. They gave an excellent presentation citing reasons this program benefits our students, faculty, and the entire district. Books are expensive, and this expense is an obstacle to student success. Some students are unable to attend classes because of the cost of the textbooks, and our enrollments are negativity affected. Under zero textbook costs, every student will have access to course material on the very first day of classes. Zero textbook resources are free online and to be printed at minimal cost. College data shows higher success rates for students with zero textbook cost available. 67% of students reported that textbook costs influence their course enrollment. At Saddleback, there are 15 zero textbook cost pathways through which students can earn a degree or certificate without purchasing a textbook. Also, the faculty can earn a $500 stipend for each course conversion to zero textbook cost. Thursday, January 14th, I attended virtually a presentation on art history plus emeritus plus online equals fun led by Eva Marie Rodriguez Morris. She showed us that the digital resources now available are amazing. You can virtually visit museums literally worldwide. For example, you can go to the Getty, pick a room that you want to see, and virtually walk around the room and see each piece of art. This is wonderful online teaching, which has helped our emeritus students engage in art. Best wishes to all for successful 2021. To paraphrase the late Mac Davis, happiness is 2020 in my rearview mirror.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Trustee Jay. Trustee Wright, you're the penultimate speaker. Do you have a board report? Trustee Wright?
Despite quite a different year ending in 2020, I think I can speak for all of us that we were looking for a restful holiday break. I want to applaud our district offices for a wonderful full video holiday card. It was wonderful. Professional Development Week commenced on January 12th through January 15th. Due to COVID-19 and the campus closure, the Professional Development Week was conducted I attended three events. The first one was Saddleback College. It was the president's opening session. It was held from 8:30 to about a little after 10 o'clock. Dr. Elliot Stern welcomed 300-plus participants. At the, Dr. Elliot announced and spent quite a bit of time on Saddleback College's decision to retire the Gaucho and to begin the search for a new mascot to see us through the next Irvine Valley College had their president's open session at 10:30 to 12:00 p.m., also on January 12th. There were about 250 participants. There was a welcome by President John Hernandez. They had an interactive interaction with Dr. Tia McNair titled From Equity Talk to Equity Walk. On January 14th, 2021, from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock, I attended another event entitled Vice President's Welcome. Dr. Martha McDonald, Vice President of Student Services, and Dr. Chris McDonald, Vice President for Instruction. I always learned an awful lot on being at this event. I always learn about a lot of what's happening at Irvine Valley College. Before I end my report, I want to draw my attention to an email sent out by Chancellor Kathleen Burke on January 15th regarding campus vaccination supply, support. I support this. As I close my remark, my wife and I received our first vaccine shot at Disneyland parking lot on Saturday, January 16th. We have, we will have our second shot on February 13th. That's my report.
Thank you. I'm glad you got your vaccination. That's important. Thanks. I'll give my report now. We received a lovely, I received a lovely text message on my phone today. The message said, "Welcome to the spring semester at Saddleback College." Well, so I'd like to tell everyone today, "Welcome to the first day of spring semester at both colleges, and I hope everyone had a restful winter break." I had the honor of chairing the Legislative Task Force meeting last week. Trustee Inman is our new rep, but she graciously agreed. I was the founder of the task force and wrote the initial campaign plan, and I'm gratified that the format is still just as I wrote it. And there were three new trustee reps at the meeting. This is a highly sought-after position. The number, the two presidents' opening session during our Professional Development League last week were also quite informative, as other trustees spoke more about them, so I won't. I'll just mention a few of the other excellent meetings I attended virtually, of course. Professors Rebecca Kaminsky and Brandy Idelman, and our student Brianna Ross, the president of ASIBC, spoke beautifully about the completion teams for student success. Professor Gary Rybal spoke about synchronized communication instructions, and he has his students give speeches in small groups, and this not only increases skills, but it decreases students' isolations during this time. Professors Christina Delgado and Julie Scholl had an international student forum entitled Resilience during COVID. Our international students spoke from their homes, and these homes were in France, Korea, Colombia, Japan, Spain, and Arizona. These international students spoke from their homes, and these homes were in France, Korea, These international students spoke about their experiences and what instructional formats work best for them while they're abroad. And these are really important information for all of us to know. So have a very good spring semester, and everyone, please stay safe. And now, we would like to have our student trustee.
Trustee Milchker, I don't think we heard from trustee Inman.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, trustee Inman, would you like... I truly apologize. Would you like to give your board report now? Thank you. Thank you.
I thought maybe since I already talked, that was it.
No, you get to talk twice today.
I really enjoyed the opening sessions, and I don't want to repeat what the other people have said. But what was interesting to me is I loved Dr. Stern's speech as a speech debate argumentation teacher. The way that he... I appreciated the way that he went through his arguments, and they were clear and they were convincing. And, you know, so many people just ramble and think that's good and, you know, it doesn't usually convince people. So I really liked that. And I love the one with Dr. Hernandez and the author. It's probably the most in-depth speech I've ever heard about things like diversity. It's easy to just skim over the top of things, and that wasn't done, so that was very moving, too. I was happy to go to the legislation meeting with Marcia and to meet the people that knew a few of them and met others. And legislation is something that I've worked with a lot in different positions, and I'm really happy to be doing that again. I'm going to attend the two conferences that are the next couple of days. I'm unclear how you go to a conference virtually. I mean, you know, the best part is getting a cup of coffee at the break and meeting people, but not really. So I will be going to the one about being a trustee the rest of this week, and then on Monday and Tuesday, the one about legislation. So anyway, it's very good, and Happy New Year to everybody. And it's quite a day being between Martin Luther King Day and the inaugural, and this is the first day of school, just a lot going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a big week. Thank you so much. I'm sorry again. Right now, we have the board report of our student trustee, Ethan Manis. You have your report today?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, everyone, so first I want to comment on the statement that Professor Murray made at the beginning of the meeting. I think the mascot has been a true challenge, but it has also been an opportunity for us to show who we care as a district and what we value and how much we care about our students. So I want to use my time to just thank everyone, faculty, staff, students, and also administration, but so tirelessly to bring this problem to the attention of the board. Sitting at this side, I hope everyone enjoyed their break. Twenty twenty was definitely a challenge, but I also believe that we all, as a community and as a district, took away some important lessons from 2020, like adaptability, making the most out of a situation, focusing on the positive, and also caring for one another. I don't think anyone can deny that both IVC and Saddleback, they were involved and beyond to make sure that our students are succeeding in their online classes, and also they have all the resources to get through the pandemic. So my hope for 2021 is you can get all those lessons that we learned from 2020 and the hard situation and apply them to 2021 and the years beyond that. This semester is another challenge, another chance for our students to take advantage of all the opportunities and resources we have at IVC and Saddleback. And it is also the last semester for many of our students, including me. So I just hope everyone enjoys their last semester, and I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Things are getting better. Thank you. And now, the Associated Student Government reports, and it would be Adam Brownell, the president of Saddleback College, the Associate Student Government, and Brianna Ross, the president of IVC, Associate Student Government. So would you like to give a report, Adam?
Yeah, I just want to say, so yeah, this break, I actually got really, really sick because I tested positive for COVID about a month ago, and I spent three weeks just completely ruined. So my break consisted of me in bed just trying to get through it. So it was... It really hit me really hard. So, and I'm still feeling it. I'm still really tired and really fatigued. But I just want to champion what Pendergast said, if I'm not butchering your name. But it's just so important that we really stay careful and diligent in preventing this from spreading because it has been really bad. So that's kind of what I want to say, just getting my head back together and getting back out of it, pulling myself together.
I'm glad you're okay. I'm sure you'll keep getting better as time goes on, but we're glad you're okay. Thank God. Okay? Okay, Brianna Ross, the ASIBC president. Do you have a speech?
Hi. Yes, so I don't have too large of a report since the semester has just begun today, so I hope everyone has a nice and safe semester. We will be reconvening as a legislative group on this Friday for ASIBC to meet, and we'll be preparing for our elections that will certainly be upholding democracy, and we are going to count every vote and be sure to do all that in light of the events that have happened recently because we value our democracy. And we also just hope that everyone will continue to stay safe and wear a mask and stay at home if at all possible. And we'll get through this all together soon, and I'm sure we'll have a great semester. That's all for me.
Thank you. The next few months could be very tough, but they will get better. So thank you, and I enjoyed hearing you at the IVC in-service event, so thanks. Okay, now, thanks. The Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, June McLaughlin, and Saddleback College Academic Senate, Blake Stevens. I see you, Blake. So do you have a report?
I do. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Burke. So class began today, and that first day of class, you always wonder who your students will be, how they will respond to you, how engaged they will be. And the good news is the future is bright. I'm so encouraged by the group of students I saw this morning in my classes. Wanted to let you know that. I want to tell you also, I'm very thankful for the chancellor and the board and our college president and administrators' approach to the pandemic and quarantine. TJ, I hope you get well really fast. Stay well. And Adam, I'm glad you're on the mend. Right now, the statistics are that one in fifteen people in Orange County has tested positive, and we had a hundred and ten people pass in the past two days from the virus. I have friends who are teaching in local school districts in the classroom, exposed to thirty students a day. And I am so thankful that you have allowed us to do our best on Zoom to keep ourselves safe and to keep our students safe. Thank you for that. Not to beat a dead horse, but I do want to talk about the Gaucho. You heard the presentations last week from President Stern. I think they were eloquently executed, made the process very clear. The Academic Senate voted unanimously to support the Associated Student Government's resolution to retire the Gaucho. You've heard how many community members were involved in this. You've heard the passion and the emotion that's been part of this process of discussion and, I would say, soul searching to see where we go from here. And so I would very respectfully request that the Board of Trustees allow Saddleback College to make this decision about where we go with our mascot. That's it for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And RJ Dolbin, are you speaking for...
Yes. So, welcome back, everyone. I'm RJ Dolbin. I am IVC Academic Senate Recorder and a math faculty at IVC. June will be back at your next meeting. She teaches on Tuesday night, so I'm just filling in for her. I just want to welcome everybody back. Hope everybody had an enjoyable and safe break. In particular, I'd like to welcome our newest member, Dr. Inman. I did policy debate at Cal State Fullerton, so I thought she would appreciate that. I do, in fact, have my timer going to make sure I don't go over time. So as multiple people pointed out, we had Flex Week this past week. I'd like to thank Robert Melendez, the Chair of Academic Affairs, the rest of the Academic Affairs Group, and all the presenters for putting together an amazing week. And multiple people have already pointed out the president's opening session with Dr. McNair. I've heard multiple people mention that they really enjoyed the more informal discussion format that did get very in-depth on the topics, and it discussed more than just what diversity, equity, and inclusion mean, but how we can actually implement practices to achieve goals in those areas. We also had a few social hour sessions to sort of combat Zoom fatigue and, you know, try and, you know, make it a little lighter. Those were very enjoyable. And other than that, just a lot of people prepping for the start of the semester, you know, trying to balance being understanding and responsive to student issues that probably have always been there but have definitely been highlighted and exacerbated because of COVID and the pandemic and the stay-at-home orders, while also maintaining the academic rigor and integrity that both schools are known for. So other than that, I just wanted to say best of luck to everybody this semester, and in particular, Board Member Prendergast and ASG President Brownell. I hope you all recover speedily and wish you all the best. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, interesting. Thank you. And now, the Faculty Association, Professor Lewis Long.
On behalf of the faculty, I'd like to thank the district administration and the college administrations, particularly the college presidents and vice presidents for their conscientious and data-driven response to the pandemic emergency and their continued support of a safe process for protecting the health of the faculty and the students. It looks like we will continue to be online through the summer, and that is a decision that has been made with the welfare of everyone involved in mind. I think it's probably important to point out on behalf of the faculty that although I have heard in public statements that teaching online is somehow a vacation for teachers, after spending twenty of the last forty-eight hours putting together one hour of video lecture for my class, I can say that it is far harder to teach a class online than it is to teach in person. And all of my colleagues, many of my colleagues who are teaching many more classes than I am are having a much more difficult time than I. So this is a challenge that the faculty is facing, but as the trustees pointed out in their earlier reports, our education is going forward and our students are being prepared. And we thank the faculty, thanks the college for protecting our welfare as well as the welfare of our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And now, the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Amy Hunter.
Thank you, President Milchker. Welcome to the Spring 2021 Semester. As we resume, we're looking forward to a productive and healthy semester. Since our last meeting, we participated in our college's Professional Development Week. We held our opening week presentation on January fifteenth, and I thank our IVC President, Dr. John Hernandez, for kicking off our meeting and bringing our classified together for this closing of the week. We covered our goals and initiatives for the semester and upcoming professional development opportunities. Earlier in the week, our Classified Senate held a panel discussion on the role of classified in diversity, equity, and inclusion. We had two excellent presentations, one from Erin Pollard, interim manager of our student equity program on the topic of embodying equity in all we do, as well as Caitlin Fuller, our Senior Administrative Assistant for Economic and Workforce Development in School of Idea, who is one of our classified who are attending the USC California Community College Racial Equity Leadership E-Convening Series. So she provided a recap report of what she's learned on implicit bias. Our classified professionals have or are currently participating in many initiatives such as the 2020 Spring USC Race and Equity Cohort, the Race and Equity Leadership that I just mentioned, and as well as our continued work with caring campus to help further develop ourselves and help support our students and our college. Thank you.
Thank you. All good reports. And now, Saddleback College Classified Senate, Darren England. Is he here?
No, he is not in attendance.
Okay. And California School Employees Association, Scott Ferguson-Green.
Trustee Milchker, Scott let me know that he has no report for tonight.
Okay. And then, the Police Officers Association, it would be Bo Berthnot. Does he have a report?
No, he is not in attendance by the...
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, good reports. Now, we're moving on to the discussion item, which is item 4.0, which is the Saddleback College Marine Science Technology Program Discontinuance Recommendation. And the Saddleback College Vice President of Instruction, Tran Vu Kumamoto, will provide an update on the Marine Science Technology Program. And there's also another item after this, which is an action item about this program, which is item 6.2 with a lot more information in it. And following this item, I'll move that item next so that we can take... We could decide on that item at that moment. Okay, thank you. Okay, Vice President Kumamoto, do you have... Would you please present your program?
Yes. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Burke. Thank you for providing me with an opportunity to update you on the Marine Science Technology Program. Before I provide you with a summary of the data we use to inform the Senate's recommendation, I want to share that the review of the data for our labor market supply, demand, and program effectiveness is done every two years for our CTE programs, and this review process was what helped to inform the recommendation that I'm sharing with you tonight. Some background information for you. Our program is about fifty years old. It's one of two programs in Orange County, and it has been historically been a small program to begin with. The students who are in the program earn a Marine Science Technician degree or certificate or a Seamenship degree or certificate. In the Marine Science Program, we have... The students do eight units in general marine science, environmental studies, or biology courses, and fifteen units in marine science tech courses specifically. For the Seamenship Program, the entire twenty-three units is done in the Marine Science Technology courses. So that kind of gives you a little picture about the program itself. Next slide, please. This shares for you the student demand and how it has declined since 2014 to present. You'll notice that in 2014-15, we had about a hundred students in the program, and gradually over the years, it's declined to twenty-two, about seventy-five percent decrease in student headcount. For the FTS, we started in 2014-15 with twelve point three full-time equivalent students, and you'll see that recently we're at one point five nine, about a ninety percent decrease in FTS count. So this demonstrates that the demand for our program has dwindled quite dramatically over the last five years. Next slide. With regards to program awards, you'll notice that the highest award year we had was in 2017 with, what, five awards? For the last couple of years, we have not had any awards. And so we are noticing that our students, even though they're here in the program, not many of them are moving towards getting an award. With regards to the labor market analysis that you see there, you'll notice that with regards to jobs, Orange County is not really a hotspot for this type of job. For an area our size, we only have a hundred and fifty-two positions where we would normally, if we use the national average, should have about five fifty-nine in this area. So again, not very marketable of a job here. Compensation is lower than the national average as well, and we all know that that is challenging given our high cost of living in this area. And then, with regards to job postings, we are matching the national average with just one job posting per month. So again, the demand for work in this field is not as high. So that shares with you the student demand and our awards and labor market. Next, I want to share with you the other area of concern for us is regarding the equipment for this program. Currently, we have ten Capri sailboats. These sailboats were actually donated to us by you... These sailboats were actually donated to us by UCI over 10 years ago, and they'll probably need to be replaced in the next couple of years. In order to maintain, store, and also provide additional boat rentals for the program, we spend about $20,000 a year in program support. So again, you know, this is another area where we feel that it's going to be challenging for us to support the program, given the small size of students that are in it. Next slide, please. So given our decreasing student demand, the low number of completers and low labor market need, and the deteriorating equipment, our Academic Senate on November 18th did vote to recommend that the program be discontinued. We feel that, given that the program has no full-time faculty or staff positions in it, there will be no impact to faculty and classified staffing. We currently do have, based on our research office, nine students that are identified as being in the program, six of which are taking classes in a way that we believe they are here just to build their skills and not necessarily to complete. The other three students are at around 45 units, and we believe that we would be able to help them get to completion by using myriad of articulation, substitution, and other options to help them get through their classes. We'd also like to recommend that we surplus the 10 Capri sailboats, and we'll be working with the District Business Office to move forward with that as well. So that ends my presentation, and I'll open it up for questions.
What, I have two questions. Was it unanimous in the Academic Center to vote for discontinuance of the program? That's what I heard it was.
Yes. Yes, it was.
I read that. And I know it was recommended by one of the, by the Chair of the Ecology Department, I think, who realized that this was really a very tiny program. And where do you keep these Capri sailboats?
They are all housed at the Dana Point Harbor.
Then you have to pay rent?
Yes.
Okay.
And what are you going to do with them?
Right now, we're investigating our surplus, surplusing them.
Okay, and Trustee Wright had his hand up. Trustee Wright?
Yes, just a couple of comments. One is that I went back and looked at the catalog back in about 2013. They had at least about, they had 20 courses in this, and now they have only 11 courses. So they've lost a lot of courses. And also, I looked up and I found out too that the program was led by a department chair who is a full-time faculty member in the Environmental Studies Program. In other words, they use part-time instructors, so I think that's part of the problem here. You need a full-time person who really enjoys this. And I know back, back when I was the Dean of Math/Science Engineering, you needed somebody, a full-time faculty member to help increase your enrollment, so.
You're right. You need someone to promote the program. There needs to be someone there to push and promote the program, and if there's nobody doing that, it's tough. But there might not be any jobs. It doesn't sound like there's any jobs. So also, if a student completes a program and there's no jobs in the area that they live, that's not very fair to the students to do that to them, so.
If I can just speak to that, President Milchekar. That's the whole source of the recommendation from Academic Senate discontinue this program is based on enrollment and based on the lack of viable job options. Capitalism works pretty well in programs like this with credentials. When the credential no longer translates into a career, enrollment drops, and it's really hard to save it. Trustee Wright, I want you to know that many of the classes taught within this program will go on under environmental science. So the students will still have options of learning about this subject, just not tied to a CTE credential for which there are no good jobs anymore. That's really the change we're talking about.
And I also looked up from the class schedule, and there still is oceanography being taught, of course, and different marine science classes are still being taught, that, you know, if students want to go into those fields.
Well, those are the Math/Science/Engineering Division.
We do have, we do have those marine science classes and oceanography in our math/science area, and we also have some courses in environmental science that will be continuing the marine science.
It was interesting, somebody in one of the things I read said that maybe students were taking those classes to learn how to sail. They didn't really want to get the credential, they just wanted to learn how to sail, which is, I can understand that, you know? So that, you don't need a whole program for that, so, okay. So are there any other questions? Okay, so now.
Marcia, no, no, you've got myself, and you have Ethan. We've had our hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Trustee Jamal, go ahead.
I think some of my questions have been answered through the discussion here, but, sorry, Tram. Now, what, so these are both certificate programs, CTE. Right, marine science technology is, these are certificate programs.
It's a, we have a degree program, an AS degree and a certificate in both.
Oh, it's both, okay.
Yes.
Now, what, what type of jobs would they typically get? With this degree or certificate?
They're basically working on boats as technicians in supporting the, I would assume, maintenance of the boats. And the seamenship one is actually sailing and being able to maneuver the boat.
So you listed 500, so we must know what kind of jobs they get, because you listed that there were 552 current job openings in the area.
There's only 152 in our area. What that particular LMI, that labor market analysis shows is that for an area our size, typically, if we use the national average for this job, it would be 559, but we actually have less than that, because we're not really a good spot for those positions.
What other, the other three Orange County Community College districts, do they offer a marine science technology program?
Yes, we do have a second college in our county that offers it. I think it's Coast.
It's Orange Coast.
It has a big, is a big program.
So, so OCC offers a degree and certificate in, as a marine science technician and a seaman?
Yes.
Their boats are in Newport Beach. They have a site in Newport Beach.
And in our packet for the other item, you'll find information regarding their program and how it aligns with ours. And so we'll, we'll be working to see if there's any courses our students would be able to articulate.
And I, yes, it's, I'm saddened to hear this, because I think these are two areas that are fantastic to develop your skills and explore the natural world. I think Elliot answered some of it. So are environmental sciences programs and environmental sciences, environmental studies programs are continuing? Is that what I understand?
Yeah, the Marine Science Technology Program was under the Environmental Science Department, and basically because of the talks, just looking at the environment and sustainability in our waters as part of that curriculum. And so those classes that are part of the program in marine science tech that are general will continue. And as Trustee Wright stated, there are a couple of classes that are also offered in our math/science area. We're also finding that a lot of students who go into this field will go into a bachelor's degree. And so the programs, the courses that we have will help to support lower division major prep for students who are transferring.
And I assume other than OCC, there are probably some, you know, other private sector ways for students to get these skills, correct?
If we're looking at just building the sailing skills, yes, there are other opportunities for students to learn, some that are not attached to, you know, academic programs, more professional development, kind of personal growth programs.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee Manife, did you have a question?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. So first of all, I want to know, do we have a sense of why, from 2015, we are like, it's like such a decrease in the student enrollment? Because I feel like this is not that long ago. So do we have a reason why that happened?
Well, the program has been decreasing over the years, and we're seeing the impact more drastically in the last five years. Part of that, we think, is because there's been just change in kind of education required and what people might want to do with regards to this program. The students that we see taking the classes are not necessarily seeking a degree or transferring. They're actually just wanting to build skills in this area. And so it's just the climate and interest in the program has shifted.
Was there like a change in like requirements for like transferring or like a degree? That, like, I don't know, like transferring, that resulted in people not taking it or further like certificate or degree, does that recreation?
I'm sure that that's impacted the program's enrollment for students who are wanting to get a degree. The program started at a time where, you know, your associate's degree level was able to get you into, you know, good-paying jobs. Over the years, we've done a really good job at the community colleges to increase college-going and increase transfer. And I think that the jobs are just elevated into that higher-level bachelor's degree.
Also, I signed a 6.2 presentation that I feel like this is actually opening a new school for this program. Is that, is that correct?
I do not know.
Who's opening a new school? I'm sorry.
I think their program's already in existence. I don't know if it's new facilities.
So in, in item 6.2, in the Exhibit A, I think, four, and it says, "Orange Coast College is opening their School of Sailing and Seamenship New Marine Air Training Center in the fall 2021."
Yes, that is correct.
You're having, they're upgrading it.
Yes, that is correct.
Right. So, because like when I see, when I look at their enrollment, it's not that much higher than our enrollment. So do we know why they're actually investing more in the program? Like, just like taking it opposite direction, that's what we're doing?
They actually, from my understanding, they own that marina over there, right next to the Cub Scouts Marina, where I used to take my kids to learn sailing. And so probably, you know, if they own them, that's my understanding. So if they own Maria, you know, that's, it makes sense for them to have a program, yeah.
And I don't want to speculate too much on why another college is making a different decision, though I certainly respect the question. What I want to assure you is our faculty and our Academic Senate are doing their job in running these labor market analyses every year and in determining when a program is no longer leading to a high-paying job. And we trust that other colleges are doing the same thing, but it's really our job to make sure we're doing it here and not to worry too much about what they're doing.
All right, yeah. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you. So are there any other questions? So if it's okay with everybody, we'll move item 6.2, which is Saddleback College Marine Science Technology Program Discontinuous Recommendation forward, and we'll vote on it now. There's much more information in that. As trustee Manife said, there's much more information in that agenda item about, about this agenda item. So does anybody have any questions, or is there anything else you'd like to say? Vice President Vu Kumamoto or President Stern?
I think that's all we have to share with you. And just to note that our Academic Senate did due diligence and looked at all of the data before they provided the recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
Nothing further. Thank you for all the great questions and the level of engagement. We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, we have to do the best for our students, and if there's no jobs in the area, we don't want to have a program where the students can't get a job in that area. So that's kind of the bottom line, I feel. But anyway, is there a motion in a second for this item? For item 6.2, we need to have a motion to. Trustee Pendergrass moves it, and trustee Wright seconds. Is there any discussion? I think we already discussed it. Any other discussion? Okay, well, will, will you please call the roll so that we can vote on this item?
Trustee Inman. Yes. Trustee Jay.
Yes.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Milchekar.
Hi.
Trustee Penderga.
Hi.
Trustee Rydell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Manife.
Hi.
Okay, so that item passes, and the Marine Science Technology Program will be discontinued. Next, the consent calendar. Are there any items that board members would like to pull from the consent calendar?
5.1.
Jay, 5.1, okay.
I want 5.1, too, so.
Okay, okay. And are there any other ones?
Yes.
Trustee Pendergrass, I'm sorry.
5.4.
And 5.5 for me, Marcia.
Okay, okay, thank you. 5.5, okay. Okay, so, so the first item, which was pulled by trustee Jay and trustee Wright, is, wait, we vote on.
I'm gonna, I'll move the balance of the items.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a second? So trustee Jamal made the motion, seconded by trustee Inman. Will you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Milchekar.
Hi.
Trustee Penderga. Trustee Rydell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Manife.
Hi.
Okay, so that item passes. And in item 5.1, which was pulled by trustee Jay and trustee Wright, which is the minutes, trustee Jay, what would you like to say about this item?
I would like to say about it in Exhibit A, page 6, there's a paragraph that is repeated, Representatives to Saddleback College and IVC College Foundation, and then it's repeated again, Representatives to Saddleback College and IVC College Foundations. If that could be corrected and not repeated.
Okay, thanks.
I saw that also.
Okay, they both saw that. Okay, can we make that correction? And with that, eagle-eyed trustees, with that correction, would you like to make a motion to pass the agenda?
Motion to pass 5.1.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
And so the motion by trustee Jay, seconded by trustee Wright to pass item 5.1. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Milchekar.
Hi.
Trustee Penderga.
Hi.
Trustee Rydell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Manife.
Hi.
Okay, thanks. And then now we're going to item 5.4. Is there a motion in a second, and we could just?
All right, I want a clarification first.
Okay, so let's have a clarification first.
So in Exhibit A, page 2, shows the introduction of museums crossed out. I'm just curious, is that due to COVID? Or is that going to be permanently removed from the curriculum? I was going to ask this question before, it was brought up earlier, the ability to take virtual tours of museums. But I'm just curious if this is something that's permanent or just because of the current situation?
Who can answer that?
I think we're looking for Dr. McNair.
I think we're looking for Dr. McDonald, Dr. Herman.
Yeah, that particular question, if it's, Chris McDonald is available. If you could add him to the room, Anne Marie.
Good afternoon, trustees. The museum studies course is being permanently removed. That does not have to do with COVID-19.
Okay. Okay.
I'll move 5.4.
I second.
Okay, okay, well, there's been a motion in a second, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Pendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Riddell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Monasty.
Hi.
So that one was passed. And then item 5.5, which trustee Jamal pulled it, which is the.
Yep, that was me. Looks like we got a good outcome here. My question is, so my understanding is that this agreement limits our district's liability for students or faculty that have exposure to COVID. I think we were in this place because I think the UC system was being unfair to us when the first came about, because they wanted no liability and wanted, wanted to accept no liability exposure. So I think it's a good outcome, but my question is, so what, it caps our liability. Where is the UC system on liability?
Anne Marie, do you know that?
Well, we're indemnifying that.
Great. So there's a mutual indemnification overall on liability, but the addendum is specific to COVID. And what it does is it caps our liability for any COVID cases or claims that are produced against the district to the amount of insurance that we have for our COVID cases. So if someone were to sue UCI, I don't know if they have the same type of coverage that we have within our memorandum of understanding through the JPA for our liability protection or not. So I don't know what their liability is, if they have any coverage or not. I just know it's something that our JPA did put in a special clause that provides up to $25,000 in legal fees, and it's legal fees only, so it would not include any damages or anything else. That we do have that amount of coverage. And this addendum would limit our exposure to that $25,000.
That's a lot better than it was before. Before, it was really tough.
Okay, so we don't know what the kind of exposure the UC system would have. This is only relating to us. Well, they wouldn't have done it if they didn't feel like they were in a good place with, so I imagine they're.
Well, right now, I asked the chancellor about it. Right now, UCI is close to all clinical placements right now. So right now, it's kind of a moot point because of the COVID surge, so. But.
Okay, I guess I'll move the item then.
I second it.
Okay, can the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Pendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Riddell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Monasty.
Hi.
Okay, the next item is, we're going into the general action items. We're moved out of the consent calendar. And that's 6.1, which is Irvine Valley College Accreditation Midterm Report and Saddleback College Accreditation Midterm Report. So who is going?
So moved.
I second it.
Can you please? Okay, so now we'll discuss it and then we'll vote on it. Thank you. So the motion's made by trustee Jamal, seconded by.
Jay.
By trustee Jay. Is there someone that's gonna make a presentation on it? Because I read the whole thing from both colleges.
We just accept it.
We just accept it? There's no presentation on it?
No.
No, it's under general action.
Okay, okay, so that's too bad, because I, okay, thank you.
Marcia, do you have questions?
No, I just learned a lot and I don't have any questions. I have, oh, there was one thing I thought I'd mentioned, which is kind of snarky, but they have a photo on page six of 48 in the Saddleback College Accreditation Report of a woodworking class. And there are no woodworking classes at Saddleback College, because I was there when they actually did away with the woodworking class. It was President Bullock that did it, and we had a lot of discussions over it, because I had problems with it at first also. So I would recommend them taking that picture out and putting a picture in of a class that we have. And I did check the class schedule and I checked the catalog and I Googled it on the website. And there are no woodworking classes, so I would suggest you put a different picture in there of another one of our wonderful classes that we teach in the accreditation midterm report. So that was one thing. And I just thought it was very fascinating. I liked the hot links that you could link it to the different, the many programs that we have, all the different, and the way they're really trying to create data. And they're trying to answer the, the, the last midterm, the last report, they asked us to do some things and the colleges are really working very hard to answer those questions and ameliorate those problems. And so this is the midterm report halfway through a seven-year cycle. And this, it'll be brought back, this is actually for review and study, to tell you the truth. I just realized that. And at the next meeting, it'll be on the board agenda for approval. We could vote approval, but it's actually on for.
Can we vote?
Yeah, let's vote anyway. It's okay. Can the clerk please read the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Pendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Riddell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Monasty.
Hi.
Okay, so that'll be brought back next time for the final approval, and they're submitting it in February. And 6.2, we already voted on. Now 6.3, which is the CCCT Board of Director nominations. And every community college district votes on having one of their board members run for the nominations. There are seven openings and one person is running for reelection again, so there are six openings. So it seems like it's a relatively good time to run. So trustee Pendergast, are you interested in running again? No? Okay.
I have a suggestion here. And I saw TJ's negative nod. I think, I think there's someone we should put forward, if she is willing. I think we should put forward Carolyn Inman.
Yeah, okay. Would you be willing?
I think she would be great in this role, and TJ set the stage for her. And I think, I think it's a good year to run, as trustee Melchiker said.
It's very, you know, usually there, I think they have a three-term maximum, and that's why there are six openings right now, which is very unusual. So it might be a good term to run, you know.
If you're willing, Carolyn, I just, I think that'd be a good.
Yeah, thank you. I would be willing.
Excellent.
Excellent. Now, do we vote on this? Or, yeah, we do vote on it. So.
Need a motion in a second.
Yeah, trustee Jamal, you want to make the motion?
I move that we, I don't know, it's not a nomination. I move that we put forth trustee Inman, or support, or put forward trustee Inman to serve on the.
We are nominating her.
I nominate Carolyn, okay. Let me restate it. I move that we nominate Carolyn Inman to serve on the Triple CT Board of Directors.
I second it.
Okay, so trustee Jamal makes the motion and trustee Witt seconds it. Will you please read the roll call?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Pendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Riddell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Monasty.
So congratulations, trustee Inman. That's good, excellent.
Good luck.
Good luck.
She's not, it's not, it's just not over yet. It's just starting.
Yes.
Yeah, and they usually say you have to run at least once. People don't usually get it the first time, but you never know.
You never know.
You never know, so that'd be great.
I'm already getting emails, so you have to get on the ball here.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We'll support you. It'd be good to have a board member be on the board there. That would be really nice. So.
Not for lack of trying.
It's an uphill battle, it really is. Okay, the next one is 6.4, SOC CCD Budget Calendar and Development Guidelines. It's to approve the budget calendar budget development guidelines for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. And actually, our vice chancellor of fiscal services has initiated this calendar and budget development, so I think it's great. So do we have a motion in a second?
I move that we approve this.
Second.
Budget calendar.
Trustee Jay moves and trustee Wright seconds it, and will you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Pendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Riddell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Monasty.
Hi.
Okay, and then 6.5 are the SOC CCD Board Policy Revisions. There's a number of board policies.
Except for review and study.
Yeah, except for review and study, and I'll bring them back next month for approval. Are there any questions or, we don't have to vote?
Yeah, Marcia, I know I'm on the board policy subcommittee. There were a couple, maybe I can just suggest it. I thought the district's mission statement had some grammatical issues in it. Maybe those can be addressed when it comes back for final review. And then, on the vandalism policy, I was a little confused. I don't think it was meant to be that way. The way I read it is that we were saying we're not going to try to recover cost of vandalism unless the district attorney has, or someone has been charged, actually charged with the crime. I mean, I think there could be a case when there's vandalism and there's no crime charge. So are we only going to seek to recover costs if there's a crime charged either at the state or federal level? I don't know, I don't think it'd be federally, there wouldn't be any federal jurisdiction, I don't think. So I don't know, Anne Marie, I think I've reviewed this, but I looked at it again, it just, it seemed to read that way. Maybe that was intended for that. And then on the mission statement, just take a look at the grammar.
Well, let me address the vandalism first. So, yeah, anytime we have vandalism, you know, we would, depending upon the cost to repair or replace what it was, we could make a claim against our insurance, or our property insurance, to have the replacement of that recouped through insurance if possible. The reason it's stated this way is that we could, you know, potentially go after the individual, but we could only do that if it was proven that they committed the crime. So if it's, you know, that's really the only way that we would be able to get restitution from the individual is if they were charged with the crime on that. So that's why that's worded that way, but this doesn't prevent us from getting reimbursed through our insurance if we made a claim against our property insurance.
Okay. All right.
And then on the mission statement, what is it that you want changed on the district mission?
Well, I think, I think it's a verb. I think Kathleen knows, I mean.
Yeah, I'll talk about it.
Yeah, I think it's the second sentence that needs to be reworked a little bit.
Yes.
All right, I will get it from Dr. Burton.
I just wanted to say, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
I'm done. I'm saying it's not a big change. You can fix it easily.
I would just like to say I like both mission statements of the colleges and especially Saddleback, because as I read the directions for writing mission statements, when I once had to, it is simple. It is the mission. It doesn't discuss the goals. It's just well-presented, as is IVC, but I like the consistency of Saddlebacks. Thank you.
Excellent. So this will be brought next, oh, trustee Pendergast?
Yeah. While we're raising our hands. So I have a couple. On exhibit B, page, or I guess it's technically page two, even though it says 101, 2717, can someone explain to me the last phrase that says, except that which is incidental and minimal? Do we have a definition of that or example? It says, public resources shall not be used for personal purposes or any other purpose not authorized by law, except that which is incidental and minimal.
Right, so like you use it.
Where are you?
Hold on, hold on. Three people are talking. It's policy 2717. It's the second page of exhibit B. Sorry, go ahead.
So if you, if it was a sheet of paper or a pen that happened to be from the district, that would be minimal or incidental. If you couldn't get a room of paper and print materials out for your campaign.
Okay. So it's just for. It's just for campaign activity.
Use it at all. For your camp, it's just campaign materials. Yes, specifically for campaign activity.
Okay. It just seems so vague, incidental and minimal. All right, and then policy, the next page, 3440.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious why we are. Yeah, why are we making so much emphasis on miniature horses and not other service animals that have been brought on by people, chickens and ferrets and stuff like that? Like, is there something I'm not aware of? Miniature horses are a new thing? Or is this better served to be in the AR rather than in the board policy?
So this is specific to service animals. There are only two types of service animals that are allowed within the Americans with Disabilities Act, and that is a service dog or a miniature horse. And the reason the miniature horse is filled out in the board policy is because there are very specific guidelines and regulations that go along with a miniature horse. with a miniature horse, over and above those of which go for the service dog. And all of those have been spelled out in our regulation for service animals. And just so you know, the AR for this particular policy is about 10 pages long.
Wow.
Okay.
So the miniature horse was recently added as a service animal category. So we're not talking about comfort animals.
Right.
Specifically service animal.
I get you. All right, that answers my question.
Trustee Monapi has his hand up.
Sorry, trustee Monapi?
Yes, I just have a comment to make. I just want to say I really appreciate how all three mission statements include the word equity, and especially everyone at college that actually starts with that. And that's here and then is make sure to focus, focus on that word and that aspect of our college while he, when he like became president. So I just want to say I really like that, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's good. It's very good. They're good statements. Excellent statements. Thank you. Are there any other comments or, I imagine if you have any other suggestions, turn them in before the next meeting and they'll be incorporated possibly into the, well, it's better to bring it up now, actually. No other comments? Okay, so then we'll move to the next item, which is, because that's.
We need to vote.
I don't think we need to vote because it's review and study, right?
You have to vote to accept for review and study.
Oh, we do. Okay, thank you. I didn't realize that. Thank you. Learning all the time. So do we have a motion?
I move, so moved.
Okay, trustee Jay moves. Is there a second?
I, I second it.
Okay, and trustee Wright seconds it. And can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Thank you. And the next item is 6.6, which is the academic employer, academic employer and classified administrators, administrative personal actions. These are the regular items. Vice Chancellor Viscachill, are there any additions or corrections or?
There are no changes, but there are two contracts on the agenda tonight. And as required by law, I need to read out a couple of the specifications. One contract the board will be voting on tonight is an extension of Dan Friedel's current contract. So the terms remain the same as previously approved by the board, except it's being extended from July, January 1, 2021 to January 31, 2021, because that is with a new dean set to start her first day of employment. The second contract is in fact that new dean for the Dean of Health Sciences and Human Services. Her name is Dr. Sherry Lowen. The dates of her contract, January 31, 2021 through June 31, 2023. She comes in, it's range 22, step four, annual salary of $180,024, and a monthly transition stipend of $250 and a phone stipend of $165. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So is there a motion and a second for the?
Move, so moved.
I second.
Jamal makes the motion and trustee Witt seconds it. Can you please read the roll call for this item?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And trustee Monapi.
Aye.
That, that passes. And the next one is the 6.7, the Classified Actions, Regular Items. So trust, Vice Chancellor Viscachill, are there any corrections to this?
Thank you. There are no changes to this item.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second.
I, I move.
Okay, trustee Wright makes the motion.
I second it.
And trustee Jay seconds. Please call the roll for this item.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is 6.10, which is, no, no, I'm sorry, 6.9. 6.8, excuse me, I'm sorry. 6.8, which is the Non-Bargaining Unit Personnel Action.
There are no changes to this item.
Okay, can you please, is there a motion?
I so moved.
I second it. He moves and trustee Witt Rydell seconds it. And can you please call the, the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, item 6.9 are the 20, 2021, 22 bonded sabbatical recommendations, and there's six of them. The heads of the committee is Tony Huntley and Vice Chancellor Viscachill, and they've selected these as the top people to get the sabbaticals. Are there any questions or comments?
I think there's 13.
Didn't I say 13?
I thought you said six, but I could be mistaken.
Oh, I meant, I meant 13. Sorry.
Well, I'll move it.
I said 13. Okay, thank you. And.
I just have one que, I think it's been moved, Marsha, and there's a second. I just had one comment. I think they all look really good. I don't want to, of course, I don't want to interfere in any of the, any of the sabbatical research they're doing. I might be able to help with one of them. So, but I know that maybe faculty feels awkward because I'm a trustee, but I think Professor Boons proposed sabbatical. Someone wants to tell him, I'd be, might be willing to help him connect to industry folks that could help with his research. So I'd be, it's not mandatory. I've just, you know, I'm offering it up because I, I think I might be able to help him should he be interested.
Yeah, yeah, I read all 13, 13 proposals, and they're very diverse and different and very, quite interesting. I'd like to hear some of their projects after they complete them.
And I think June's, oh, sorry, go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, June's was on cannabis.
Yeah, and June, of course, I wouldn't tell June what to do. I think she clearly knows what she wants to accomplish. But I don't know, June, if you're on the call, you may want to talk to this, some of the local cities that have been going through these cannabis ordinances, like, you know, Santana and Costa Mesa and others.
I would just like to commend the sabbatical committee for the work that they've done. First of all, Tony Huntley is a terrific co-chair and does a ton of work for this committee, but the committee itself has just their, their really, their level of discernment and what they require to be approved as an application is impressive. And so what you see before you is not obviously everyone that applied, but it's the ones that made it through the application process with or without changes. And that committee does really good work. And I would just like to commend the committee for all of their work at the end of the term, right around the time that they're completing their finals. They're finishing this work and assisting the district moving forward these applications. So thank you to the committee.
Yeah, and thank you for saying that. I actually wanted to come, make some comments about all of them, but I decided I shouldn't take everyone's time up to mention that, so I won't do that. But there's some really interesting reports, you know, projects. And so I think we need to vote on that, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there, is there?
We have a motion and a motion from trustee Pendergast and a second from trustee Wright.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I think we can vote.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And trustee Monapi.
Aye.
And, and the item, the last item in the items is, before reports, is the SOC CCD California School Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding for the Novel Coronavirus. So is there a motion?
So, so moved.
I second.
Okay, trustee Jamal made the motion and trustee Rydell, Witt Rydell seconded it. Are there any questions or comments about this memorandum of understanding between the district and CSEA? Is there anything you need to say, trustee, I'm sorry, Vice Chancellor Viscachill?
I just want to thank Scott Ferguson-Green for his leadership on this. It's taken a while for us to work out the terms of this agreement, but I appreciate the work by CSEA and the district that comes to the agreement that helps support our district and our employees. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think we need to vote on this because this is a memorandum of understanding. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
I moved it.
Okay, trustee.
And I second it.
Trustee Jamal moved it and trustee Witt Rydell seconded. Please call the roll. Thank you.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Pendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, and then we're in the report section. So our reports are Facilities Plan Status Report, the CARES Act Funding Monthly Summary, the COVID.
Hold on, one second. On 7.2, Marsha, the Facilities Plan Status Report, I, I would, I would like to at some point, I think it'd be good to have a discussion item, just to have a refresher to the board on where we are on all of our planned capital projects. I think we do that already. I just don't know when it's scheduled, but I felt myself going through this that I, I think maybe because of COVID and not being on campus as much, I felt like I'm not as up to speed as I should be on both the current projects and what's being planned.
I think that's a really good suggestion personally, because, you know, because we're not on campus, we don't see the buildings, two new buildings and, and of course, the stadium at Saddleback College. So I, I think that.
So if it could be a discussion item or to update the board on, you know, on capital projects.
Right.
Good idea. That's great.
You know, vice chancellor, I have to say though that I took the time this past week to, last week, to look at the improvements over the last three months because I had all, all of the information in front of me. I don't have but the today's board meeting minutes, not minutes, agenda. But I do want to say thank you who types this up or who gives you the input, because you do see what's being updated by the italicized sentence or words. And as I asked you the other day of some of the terminology, I don't always understand, but one can ask. But I do just want to say thank you for the updates that are presented on paper. And I love the pictures. But for you to give us a synopsis of all of it, I think would be very informative. And I like that suggestion.
I agree too. So we could agendize it for one of the board meetings. So thank you for the suggestion.
Quickie.
Okay, so, and then, so these are the other reports which have to do with the monthly financial status report, the retiree OPEB trust fund, and the basic aid report. And then we go to the written report. And I also want to ask, I believe there's a, Vice Chancellor Gabel will be giving a report about the COVID relief funds that we'll be getting. And also, the chancellor of Saddleback, the chancellor and the two college presidents and the vice chancellor of business services provided a written report. And those, those were excellent as usual. They really know what's going on at the college and at the district. So it's good, particularly when we're somewhat isolated in their homes. It's really a pleasure to read about what's going on at the colleges. So thank you. So, but the chancellor, do you want to add anything to your written report or do you want to just have that stand?
No, I'll save my time for Vice Chancellor Gabel.
Okay. And what about both college presidents? Do either one of them would like to speak or should they, would they like to just leave their, their, their written reports? Okay, so then, not hearing from them, we'll move on to Vice Chancellor Gabel, who has prepared a report for us about the federal coronavirus stimulus funds. And I think we're all waiting to hear this. So thank, thank you, Vice Chancellor Gabel.
So what I'm going to do is just real briefly, kind of give you an update on kind of a compare and contrast between the original allocation of the CARES Act and the new allocation that we received under the SURSA Act, which is the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations. So kind of jumping right in, this is a reminder, this grid kind of shows nationwide how much money came through to higher education. So under the CARES Act, there was $12.5 billion that was provided to higher education. The California Community Colleges is represented here in the middle. And California Community Colleges received almost $580 million, or about 4.6% of the total amount of funding that was provided nationwide. Drilling down the South Orange, we received just under $8.9 million of the CARES Act money, which represents 0.07% of the funds that were provided. So as you recall, the CARES Act allocation, it was a 50/50 split between what we were required to provide as grants to students and what was allocated on the institutional portion. You can see that we have done well in spending down the funds. So for the grants to students, we have spent $3.9 million, meaning we have provided our students $3.9 million in grants. We only have $443,552 left to provide grants to students out of our CARES Act allocation. On the institutional portion, we have spent $3.1 million. We have $1.2 million left. So overall, with the CARES Act funding, of the $8,782,000 that was provided to us, we have $1,651,000 left to spend. So then, moving to what I'm going to call the SURSA Act, this is the new funding that just came through. So we have been, rather than $12.5 billion, this is $20.5 billion. So it's an $8 billion increase over what was previously provided. California Community Colleges are receiving $1.3 billion, which is 6.4%. So you can see we've had a considerable increase in the percentage of the funds that were provided. We went from 4.6% as a system in California to 6.4%, and that is thanks to all of our efforts on advocating that they allocate these funds on student headcount rather than on full-time equivalent students. So you can see the fruits of those efforts there. For our district, we are receiving $19,086,529, and our percentage increase has gone up to 0.09%. Here is the breakdown on the funding for SURSA. So we are required to spend the same amount on direct grants to students as we did under the CARES Act. So here, we have an obligation to provide grants of $4,390,957. Then our institutional portion is $14,695,572, for a total of just. for a total of just over $19 million. We are allowed to cover expenditures that occurred out of December 27th, 2020 with this funding. And then here's kind of a comparison of the allowable uses of funds. I won't go through every one of them, but the big key, I would say, is right here, the replacement of lost revenue. With our CARES Act funding, we cannot replace any of the lost revenue. But with the SURSA Act funding, we can. And what do I mean by lost revenue? That's the loss in parking fees, it's the loss in our community service fees, it's the loss in our child development center fees. You know, all of the revenue that we have not been able to generate because we have been shut down to the pandemic. So fortunately with SURSA, we can basically repay ourselves for those lost fees that we could not do under CARES Act. I would say the other big change is with SURSA, we can pay for our PPE and sanitizing efforts with these funds, whereas we cannot do that with the CARES Act funding. So those are two key changes that I think were made with this new allocation. Now, interestingly enough, one of the guidelines that they put into place was that if you have any funds not spent from CARES, those unspent funds now are subject to the SURSA rule. So when I mentioned earlier that we have about 1.6 million in CARES Act still unspent, that 1.6 million can follow the column here on the right of what they can spend the money on. Our spending deadlines have not changed, so it's still tied to what our initial funding was granted. So we have until the beginning of May of 2021 to spend the funds, although, and this is a big although, they will allow us to request a one year extension if it's a no cost extension. And so that was really it. I thought since this was new funding and it was a significant amount of new funding, I wanted to bring that to you. I had mentioned it in the budget memo. And so this just provides you a little bit more detail. So now I'll open up any questions that anybody may have.
I want to thank you for bringing it forward because this is new funding that we we got recently. And this is like cutting edge information for all the board members. So I really appreciate your actually volunteering to come forward and 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 give us this report now. So thank you. Are there any are there any questions?
Yeah, I do, Marcia. So Emery, thank you for bringing that forward. I was going to ask you about it tonight. You answered some of the questions, one of which is we still have money we didn't spend from the CARES Act. And so that's going to roll over into the new criteria. And I believe that with Biden being inaugurated tomorrow, I think we're going to get a third round. So that's conceivable that that will happen. And Dana, I'm sure we'll keep you guys updated on on that language as it as it moves through. This is not an insubstantial amount of funding. And the fact that we didn't spend all of the earlier CARES Act funding just means that the board does need to be informed about how we do specifically intend to spend these funds. I'm not sure we're in need of PPE. My understanding is that we had an excess from the state of of a lot of PPE. So I just, you know, I think you 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 touched on it a little, but I think deciding how we are actually going to spend this money is really is very important because it's not a small amount.
Yeah, I think that's good, too. And also, I think the CARES Act was very restrictive in how we spent the money. It almost had to go directly to the student. We couldn't use it for hardly anything else. And this is much more, you know, it's like we're able to use it to replace some of the funding we lost over over this past year, but when we didn't have students come to the classroom and we had we lost a lot of funds from that. So that's really good. Also, I want to thank everyone for for lobbying and changing the formula to head count rather than the way they did it before because it really helped our community colleges. CCLC was pushing it and you were pushing it. And a lot of people called their legislators and it really helped. So trustee Rydell, do you have something to say?
Yeah, Vice Chancellor, can you just take the slide back about one, two or three? Whoa, go. Okay, go forward again. Or yeah, there we go. And dates tied to the CARES Act. So it we're saying now that we have this is, okay, so in essence, they gave us more money for a semester as opposed to the year that we had from the CARES Act?
Yeah, they're deeming it as a supplement to the CARES Act. And so since they're deeming it as a supplement, that's why they didn't change the date of the budget period that they provided. However, they did say that we can get the one year.
Extension. Okay, yeah. All right. I thought I saw that.
Right. To trustee Jamal's point that we haven't spent, you know, all of the CARES Act money that we received last May, part of that is intentional because we were holding off some of the grants for students for this current semester. And, you know, I think the other part of it, too, was some of the campuses were also holding back the money to spend the semester, knowing that we had until May 5th and May 6th to get that fixed. You know, so we will have it all spent by or have the 1.6 million that's left over, I'm sure we will have spent by May 5th and May 6th. And for the additional, the new SURSA money, the 19 million, you know, it's so new, I don't think the campuses have really had an opportunity to identify how they're going to be spending the money. But we will be adding this into the monthly report, just like we have for the CARES Act and the COVID block grant. We'll now have a third monthly report that will report on a SURSA. So you can see each month how much we spend in traffic.
Okay.
I guess this is just a, go ahead, Terry.
Oh, sorry. I'm sure we'll be spending a lot on cleaning. I mean, this, I see that it's till the end of May, but I'm sure we're going to ask for an extension. At least I think we would. And I appreciated the memo that I got from, well, that we all got from Chancellor Burke in regards to, you know, changing and improve improving our policy in in how we take care of our campus. And I think if we bring back our students in the fall, that that really, well, it just needs to be done, period. But I appreciate that we have money to do all of that because it's going to take money to do all of that for both campuses.
And and after. The lost revenue is huge. You know, we have lost millions and millions of dollars. And so being able to use the reimburse for that, I think will be a big relief for the campus.
Right. That's the big one that I saw on that page. Right.
And then after this big surge in a few months, after vaccinations, more people are vaccinated, there might be some lab classes that we bring back and we have to clean those very thoroughly. Still, we're still in a pandemic, no matter what. So so it's good to have funding for that as well. Okay, are there any other questions?
So what about vaccinations? Something came from the chancellor about having the board or the employees vaccinated for COVID.
Yeah, the employee should be vaccinated for sure.
That's still all in the planning stages with the county.
Okay.
So we'll keep you updated on that when we have more information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think I think we found out that that the community colleges' teachers are considered to be our teachers. So they they're in that cohort to get vaccinated when hopefully when the other teachers get vaccinated. So that would be a really good thing for our employees, for the whole staff. So I guess you're bringing back that information when you get it. So thank you.
Okay.
So are there any other questions? Okay.
You have a chance to actually end the meeting before nine o'clock.
I know, I was about to say, I think we should all be congratulated because the meeting is going to be ended before nine o'clock. First time in a long time. So right now, if there's no other questions or comments, the meeting is adjourned. Okay, we have 10 minutes to go before nine o'clock. 10 minutes early.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good meeting, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Bye bye.